Are you connected now?
No, it's warming up.
Okay, so let's get started folks. I'm sorry, we had a scheduling of the town office conflict. So tonight the city area commission is meeting there. We're meeting out here.
More meeting space Denise.
Yeah, when's that town hall gonna be done? Alright, so it's called meeting to order. Is there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Changes or additions to the agenda? Alfred.
You wanna come closer so we could hear you better?
We just started another project on Old West Trips Road. Burn removal. And we're going to put gravel on it. It's that hill, long hill right by the Martins. So that's what we'll be working on this week.
Whether committing?
Any chance you can get somebody? I went by her today. I know that's not what you usually do. But I noticed there's a stone wall right across from the Morses. And this dirt is just throwing up against it. Somebody just...
They've been Mars?
Yeah. Where, you guys? I know with the grater. They didn't complain, I'm just saying it looks not very good. It's all this black dirt up against the wall now.
Against which wall?
The stone wall across from their house. It looks that way from the road, maybe I'm wrong. It looks like all torn up and...
Can you check it out?
Kinda bad. I'm waiting for the complaint to come in, you know?
So where's the dirt getting splashed from, from the road?
Well, it looks like, you guys, there's a hill going... This is going north, there's a hill and there's the greater angle.
Towards Kent Hillade.
Yeah, and so...
That's our project.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And so I'm saying that we're not done. Oh, okay.
We just started today.
Okay.
So yes, it's gonna look terrible for a while.
Oh, okay, so you're gonna go...
We're gonna shape it, we'll seed the edges. We're pulling the berms off. So we get this up, there's a burn that's a foot and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're pulling that off and then we'll put the gravel on it. So yeah, no, we're far from done.
Okay.
And we'll seed the edges. The edges back so it'll be grassed in.
Okay.
I think if we're talking about the same spot...
Well, yeah, okay, but yeah, but it looked like it was like... You know, just because the way the machine goes in, it just pushes. It's kinda mucky, it looks like it pushed it against the wall. So before we get a complaint, let's show this sign. Well, maybe you're gonna do that, let us finish. Yeah, I wouldn't... I mean, we just, if it's the same project, yeah, I'm talking about. We just started it today. And we'll make it right. I talked to the landowner, Mrs. Martin, she was totally fine with it. Yeah, it'll heal when we get done. Like I would see you down.
Sounds good.
So, and I'm also been working on the town hall as well, no? That's been keeping me a little bit jumping. They're supposed to pour conquer, start pouring concrete tomorrow.
Oh, okay, so here he's coming back.
Yeah, we did, we dug those last parts of the holes that they needed for Thursday, so...
If you're pouring concrete for what?
Town hall.
Porches and things outside.
They already poured the pillars out front. It's just the porches that they extend away from the existing foundation or the original foundation. So that's, they wanted to do it in steps, so... It's almost there. And then there's still the retaining wall out in front underneath the stairs in the front between the road and the wall. That will, I'll have to dig that after he gets the pillars next to the building done. So that's, that's the progress there.
Getting ready for winter showers these days, right?
Plow fronts all on the trucks. We're, you know, the plows are ready to go, which, you know, we gotta, we need them.
I was gonna say hopefully we won't need them yet.
No, we're not gonna need them yet. We got another month. So there's the same rate. We're not getting that accumulation.
I don't think you're supposed to get an accumulation.
No.
Their famous new term, snow showers.
Yeah, no. What does that mean?
Right. Anything else?
So other than that, unless people have questions, I don't have much. You guys are raring to go. They're also pulling back.
Who, the road crew?
The road crew, they're...
Oh, they mean they're ready to plow?
They're loving it, well, one of them is.
Which one, Paul?
Paul is really excited about snow. He is just waiting for it.
Really? Wow.
You serious? Yep.
Who knew, right?
After everything he went through last year.
Yeah.
Well...
That was a learning experience.
Yeah, he's got that out of his system now.
Guess everybody has to have something like that happen when they learn, right?
Well, that's the best way to learn.
Right, yeah.
Any mention about the Worcester Road and Dorothy Naylor's concern?
Yeah.
I talked to Dorothy about it. I scolded her a little bit, asking her to call me first with any issue. And then it went to a lot larger project in which what can be done. She thinks it, and rightfully so, it needs to be dug up and redone.
Cause the poplar's cut and nailed it.
Not that stretch. She's talking about, she's talking about from Mike Mackey's to the tat, to the sort of the fish and boat access. It's that flat that's constant, you got water on both sides. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just wicked, road just wicks it up.
I thought you did that part too. You didn't, okay.
No.
And the other, but the other part of the road that you did do...
The part up above, we haven't touched it. We touch it once in the spring, we grade it, and then it's done. We don't touch that again.
Yeah, cause that's held up nicely.
But that's got three feet of gravel and under drain and...
This one's gonna be a tough one, though. It's basically built in a swamp.
It is, that's right. And that, but that's what she's looking for. I thought it was just...
I thought it was just she wanted...
Cause I went and looked at that road this morning and that's the spot that I see. Yep, we need to get a grader on this.
Right.
And then I see that, see the email saying that, you know, that it's just the worst road in town and this road needs to be more intended to. And so I called her right away and I said, you know, please, can you just call me first? And let me explain what the deal is? But then she went on saying that it's a lot larger project than, than just a quick fix. Now, a quick fix, the way I took it from her opinion was great. So...
That's how we fix all the roads.
Right, it's a dirt road and it's, and it's got water on both sides of it.
Right.
That's gonna be a tricky fix. But I think what she's after is, is us to look into a grant project.
Right.
To dig it up, new gravel down. And, you know, you'd have to put fabric in also.
Yeah.
But that's a large project and certainly not happening this year.
Well, no, we wouldn't have money for a large project like that. Have to plan for it, so maybe you can put that on your list of future projects.
Yeah, well, we're, we're, we are gonna apply for some class two grants for next year. So that's one that we can look at.
Class two is county road.
Class two highway. Class two highway is normally we use, there's structures grants and there's class two. So usually we use class two grants for blacktop.
Right, that's what I thought.
But you can also use them for resurfacing.
Oh.
And rebuilding problem spots.
Okay, well, that's good.
So that's one to look at. There's, that's a long, there's a long list of, you know, projects that that grant could cover, so... So I'm guessing that Dot's gonna wanna come in and talk with the select board about that.
I don't think so.
No, I mean, I didn't get that from her email. She just was really, you know, pleading her case that it was a problem spot and I just wanted to make sure it's on your radar and...
Yeah.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
Well, don't be surprised if she wants to come in, cause that's the way I took it.
Oh, no, I don't, I didn't take it that way at all.
No.
That's all right.
And it's all right if she does.
That's right.
But, yeah.
So anyway, I dealt with that as best I can. I'll grade it as soon as it dries out enough so I can, you know, when it rains every other day, which has it all summer, we've been very lucky.
Right.
But this fall, we've gotten some rain and what does rain do? But just makes it breathe powls. So we'll get to it as soon as we can. As soon as we have a couple days of dry weather.
Good, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the tires on...
Oh, yeah, you said that was in Eastmont Hillade.
Yeah, I went to investigate those this morning and I run into Eva Contrick, which was one of the, one of the, she was one of the...
Right, yeah, the only way I heard about it was the front porch forum.
Right, well, she was one of the, one of the conversators on the front porch forum. So I cornered her, I said, what can you tell me about these tires? Oh, they're up on Center Road. And I know that Center Road is just a very short part of Callis. So it's like, okay, I'm big relieved now, cause it's not our problem. It's up by the Bear Farm and there's, there's some on Hager Road too.
Can you refresh me? Cause I don't read front porch forum much.
Somebody's been, as they usually do before, green up day, seeding our road with tires. They've been driving down the road.
I've seen them on Center Road.
So there's, there's some on the north side of the hill. South side of the hill on Center Road. And then you come up the hill and then you come down across in front of the Bears Farm as you go north. There's three there and then if you go down Hager Road, there's some there. So there was a suggestion that, that people were putting those tires there to keep motor vehicles out of the ditch.
That's what I thought when I first saw that.
That's what I thought until I went on Hager Road. The Callis road crew is gonna put something up to keep motorists out. It's gonna be a cone, not gonna be a sander, okay? It's gonna be a reflective orange and white cone. So just so everybody knows, I'm not putting tires.
And so what did, what was, what did Eva want? She wanted you to pick up the tires or...
Well, no, she was concerned about the vehicles going into that wash spot and that the wash spot should be fixed.
But it's not even in the Callis.
That was a ditch they dug.
Right, yeah.
Oh, was it? I didn't go see it, cause once I knew it was out of Callis, I...
It terminates, it was terminus as you go down the hill.
Well, I do check it out. So if anybody else mentioned it on the front porch forum, I didn't think the road crew would be putting tires in ditches when I saw that. I mean, Eva was, she was, she was, you know, saying...
Yeah, no, it didn't sound like it was a complaint. You know, it's a, maybe a potential dangerous spot.
Right.
But I mean, once I knew it wasn't in Callis, it was, okay, I'm out of the picture.
Right.
It's not me.
Yeah. Okay, well, good. Want cake before you go?
No, no, I'm good, thanks. Anything else?
I can't think of anything. We'll see you and Toby next Monday night to talk, to look at the preliminary.
Budget?
Budget.
Yeah.
So we'll dive into that next Monday.
And I guess we're all set for the trucks. I haven't got the, born on date yet, but it's already, it's coming soon.
Okay.
It'll be ready for winter. It'll be ready.
Not till January anyway.
January, cause it takes...
We're gonna have to limp along.
Well, maybe it won't snow till...
Maybe it won't snow till January.
So here's something we should discuss maybe. The 2012 is back in the shop.
Which one is that? Is that the one that...
That's the lemon.
That's the lemon, great.
Cause they called asking for money for the motor repair. And I said, well, you gotta fix the motor before you get paid for it. So they, oh, oh, can you get it up here? So that was, I wanna say it was two weeks ago. So I've still got a...
It's dead?
It's, it's, it's overheating, not overheating, but it's...
He's shutting down.
It shuts down, right, there's some reason.
It thinks it's overheating.
It thinks it's overheating. So I was running it for a while with the fan unplugged, so the fan stays on.
Yeah.
Cause it's supposed to come on and off with the temperature.
Right, 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 that way it won't overheat.
Right, so I unplugged it and the fan stays on. It's like an air sensor that locks, locks the mechanism off. So I was running it like that. And then when they get called for money, I'm like, well, you gotta fix it, cause it's not right yet.
Yeah.
So it's up there. So I'm wondering if we should maybe pursue the getting our money out of it. Getting it sold now. Don't even bring the truck back here. Yeah, I think you should.
So it was gonna go to a wholesaler or something?
It's like, it's a wholesale.
Yeah, wholesaler.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, what good is it? It's gonna come back, it's gonna break down again, now we gotta pay to get it back up there every time.
Right, I mean, for the, for the amount of time that we have.
Would get some use out of it, not worth it.
Well, no, cause every time you use it, you gotta worry about something going wrong with it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think just get rid of it, just sell it. Everybody agree?
Well, because we're up against the time clock a little bit as far as the money goes, because they said they would give us 45,000 if we sell it before the first of January.
Right.
So if we go beyond January, then we're gonna lose $5,000 to sell that.
Just get rid of it.
Yeah, just get rid of it.
So that's kinda my push for getting rid of it now, because it's, that's the difference.
Sell 45,000, right?
Yeah, get the money, get as much money out of it as you can get out of it.
Yeah, and that's, that's what, that's what they told us and that's what I'm, you know, hoping that we get.
Right, okay.
But I just wanted to, you know, run through it tomorrow.
Get it, get it out of here, probably change your mind.
Well, thanks for keeping us on the loop on that.
Yeah.
Scott agrees. Six member voting that yes.
I think it's been giving us a lot of...
You're gonna feel so good when it's gone.
Yeah. It's just been such a nightmare.
Just too much.
So we still have a backup truck then, right?
Well, yes. So we'll have a...
Okay, so we're good.
We'll have, we just won't have a spare, so knock on wood. We'll be like every other town around.
That's right.
And when one goes down, we have to hustle to get it fixed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just been a very good luxury to have that spare truck.
Yeah, it has been.
Especially in the winter, so...
It's a problem in the spare tomorrow, liable, that's...
That's right.
Yep, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you Alfred.
So you'll get rid of it tomorrow?
I will look into it.
Okay.
It's our, it's not on our property right now, so it's really not. But I'll look into, I gotta get the guy's phone number, the wholesaler's phone number and talk to him.
Oh, I thought they were doing it for us.
No.
We have, it's their connection, it's their contact.
Hopefully he still wants it.
Yeah, I mean, he buys a million trucks a year, so...
Yeah, it's got a new engine.
It's got a brand new engine.
Right. Didn't good clean?
Doesn't run, but...
It's got to put load on it, that's one of the problems. It's fine.
John, you meant to say it hasn't run much.
Yeah, it's true.
Oh, my gosh.
I know we shouldn't have taken that thing back.
All right, Sandra, you wanna join us?
No, but she won't.
Pass the cake round, guys.
All right. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Sandra.
Does everybody know Sandra?
Hi. I'm here on a very limited matter and that is the renewal of our liability and casualty insurance. Ellis?
You wanna pass the...
The passive stuff, right? So the passive stuff, it, it covers our buildings, our equipment, our general liability and workers' compensation. Unemployment is by virtue of another insurance policy. So I have completed the application for renewal and I wanted to bring to the board's attention two items. And that is our coverage on our town hall and our coverage on this building. So currently, the coverage is a guaranteed replacement value. This building here is in at $280,575. It strikes me as that might be a little low. I spoke with Alfred about it, I spoke with my husband about it. It's about right, you could rebuild this building for $200 a square feet. I don't know that you can and then you have the vault. So...
The vault was like $50,000 or something like that.
The vault is entirely a kind of a room all of its own. So my thought for the select board is we certainly want to renew our policy within the timeframe that they have set. But it is my recommendation that the select board speak with an underwriter about that. They can always adjust the value and build us more for...
They don't mind if we wanna make it higher.
Right, so that, that just felt low to me. And the second item that you could, if you choose, speak with an underwriter about is the town hall. It is currently valued at $1.1 million, plus or minus a few bucks. And it is in again at a guaranteed replacement cost. However, when our inspection was done by Jim Carrion, he indicated to us that we may not have coverage, it may not be covered at all for loss because it is under construction or renovation. So that is by far and away...
Yeah, I know the list.
That is a, a... I'm certainly not gonna delete it from coverage, we're gonna keep it the way it is. But I wanted the select board to be aware that that was a red flag for me. And at the very least, if, because we're self-contained and coverage, we're in this pool with the LCT, they, they can write their policy and if they choose to write, if, if this kind of construction is excluded, it's excluded.
Is it because it's such an extreme project? I mean, you renovate your house.
It's just simply excluded from their coverage.
They call it risk...
They wanted us to, they would have preferred that we had a builder's risk...
Builder's risk, right.
Coverage on it, so that a GC would typically have that coverage because we're not covered, covered for loss.
Because we don't have a buyer or something.
Right. So the question is, one, is it covered at all? Cause you shouldn't be paying a premium if it, if it actually isn't covered at all. And two, if it is or can be covered, to what extent can it be covered? We should know about that. So my only recommendation to the board is to, if you choose, to look into those two items. See if this building is really valued at, at the right amount. It might be, I don't know, 30, $50,000, $60,000 short. And check your coverage on the town hall.
So Jim Carrion works for the league?
Carrion.
Carrion, he's Carrion.
So the league, it's their policy and he's saying it may not? Can't he just, it was a firm one way?
He says that we're not covered.
Oh, that we're not?
So I have a note, I have been making a list and I've talked to Sandra a couple times about it and we talked about it at staff meeting. I'm gonna contact Larry Smith, cause I've got all these questions about their coverage.
Why don't we just get a policy while it's under construction right now? Go to Dennis Ricker and Brown or somebody.
Can I finish? So I have this whole list of questions to ask Larry Smith and have him direct them to the right people because for one thing, we're not building anything, we're renovating. So why doesn't our current coverage cover it? It's like every time we go to V L C T to get something covered, that we think we got coverage for, it's not covered. And I'm a little miffed. I'm just miffed, I'm miffed that every time we go to use it, it doesn't do anything.
Maybe their insurance, maybe we shouldn't be insuring with them anymore, maybe it's not worth it.
Well, I think we need a representative to come and talk to the board about...
Seems like workers come.
V L C T coverage, you know, the insurance coverage that we have. Cause I know other towns have had experiences and they've gone elsewhere for coverage of some of this stuff. So anyway, so I just wanna let you know, I'm gonna get somebody to come in. It might be Larry, I don't know who.
How, how many other towns have been, had this exposure unknowingly? Why isn't that a huge letter?
Right, that's how we find out about stuff. When we find out if it's not covered, like the crane.
Yeah.
What did the whole crane thing cost us?
Oh, I don't even remember offhand.
$100,000.
$150,000.
Yeah, something like that. All right, and then Sandra has a couple more things. Do we know the, did we get the amount from the auditors?
No, he's out of the office until tomorrow, but your, your basic amount you could move and it's gonna be give or take a few cents. And I put it in that email, but I can figure that out now with...
Do we need, what we need to do, what the board needs to do is the board needs to motion to put the surplus highway money into the capital equipment fund. If you're okay not knowing the exact dollar amount, we can make a motion to do that, but I think...
But that's our general policy.
Right, we just, we've never really done it by motion before, but I think it's a good idea to do that.
You're right.
Oh, you're gonna be back with a figure, okay. You have the pretty close, right?
Yeah.
It's always been really hard to know what it is and ask the community system.
Right, and the auditors kind of are confirming that amount, which is nice.
So the amount which will be off by cents is $43,441. And that amount is calculated by subtracting the amount of money the highway was over budget in the amount of $14,307. Again, that's a rounded number, they just round all their numbers. And that amount is subtracted from unanticipated or unbudgeted highway revenue. And that amount in FY '18 was $57,748.
And that was from...
Comprised mostly of grant money. So we were over budget by grant money and that's the delta. It's that $43,000. I don't think we had that in the notes last time.
I don't think we had the amounts.
Okay.
So, all right, so I would make a motion that we approve the transfer of the $43,441 from the highway budget surplus to the capital equipment fund based on the figures as explained by the treasurer.
So that's a motion I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, next up, we have this document here, which I don't ever recall seeing before, but that doesn't mean anything, I could be seen out or getting seen out. This is the municipal bond bank's annual certification of government unit regarding post issuance tax compliance. And this is for the bond that we took out of the town office. And Sandra has completed the form saying that we've used the money the way we're supposed to, which was all to work on the town office. I don't even know, how many more years do we have to pay for this?
2024 maybe?
Not too much more than that. So we just need to say, yes, we spent the money the way we're supposed to and then sign off. So Sandra can file this with municipal bond bank. Anybody wanna? It says this certificate shall be evidence signed by the borrower, delivered to the trustee dispersing and the bond bank that the town of Callis, town office has substantially completed so as to permit, permit efficient use and operations of the borrower and setting forth any project costs remaining to be paid from the project fund established with the trustee dispersing agent.
This was all done a long time ago.
Right. Right, so you're saying the project, that you received the money, you spent the money as applied and that the project is complete.
And this is for tax...
So complete, it's about ready to fall down from age, right?
And that is, and it's an annual...
It's an annual, I've never seen it before.
Really?
It's the same, when Worcester took out a bond, it's the exact same form that we filled out every year. The bond bank is kind enough to email it to us and check the boxes.
And Sandra checked the file and there's no copy of anything from any of your...
There's a loose knob in one of the cabinets, so we'll tighten it.
All right, so I would make a motion that we assign the certification of project completion All right, so I would make a motion that we assign the certification of project completion for the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank and ask Sandra to send it and keep a copy. Can you tell me the certification there again? Certification of project completion.
And the town office.
Right.
So next year they'll ask us the same question?
Exactly.
Can't we just send them as-built plans and just be done with it?
It's, it's some sort of regulatory annual requirement. It might even have something to do with the IRS.
I bet it does.
It asks a couple of IRS-y kind of questions too.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll send this around for signature. Next up, Brookfield generator contract. And I remember this came up last year or the year before. We sent something to the school and asked them to pay a portion of the service contract and they were a little upset with us that we asked them to pay for it because the school is technically the town's emergency shelter. But they've also used this generator a few times and it required some additional maintenance, yada, yada, yada. So anyway, so now we have another, we have our annual.
What is the split we're sending toward the school? How much is it?
I think it was a half. Half.
Yeah, but a half of a thousand dollars or nine hundred, that's how it used to be.
Twelve hundred.
The contract for this generator is, is it eight?
Two, okay, two site visits a year, eight forty-six.
Yeah, I remember it was like nine hundred.
So that's for our generator, but the.
Here.
Here, but the contract for the generator at the school for which they are asking a contribution for the plan payment is twelve hundred dollars, give or take, for the year. And they're asking the town to contribute to that payment because the school acts as the emergency shelter for the town.
Why don't we?
So which one of these is, why do we?
Well, one is the contract and it, they're, they're, it's all one item.
And typically what, I remember this vaguely, we've asked the school to pay us back half of the cost of the maintenance for the school generator. But they're kind of not wanting to pay anything.
But we have been using the school building for our town meetings now, it's electricity and heat.
Right.
We are using it and we are talking about putting a trash depot there, so I would, I would support us paying for the whole freight on that.
Okay.
That would be my proposal, so we don't.
Let's see what they want.
For six hundred dollars, it's not worth it. When we use the school, we probably burn how much in heat?
I don't know.
And it's really a safe pot of money.
Well, it's, it's, it's all semantic here, really.
Well, our tax, our tax rate is, in support of what he said, not that I think we should pay the whole thing, I'm on record saying that.
Glad you're not a resident here, Holly.
The, the, the town's tax rate on expenditures is much less than the school tax rate on expenditures, since it's all coming out of the same pocket. It's not a terrible thing for us to pick up some of that.
Plus, we, plus we plow their driveway now, we didn't use to, remember? We had that whole thing with the driveway plowing thing years ago.
And again, the state subs pays for some of that if it goes to the school, right?
No, 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 no. Anyways.
Maybe not.
Plus.
They hurt people.
We do not charge, we don't charge the school for printing their portion of the town report, so, you know.
I don't think it's worth spending a lot of time on six hundred bucks.
No.
And you know what, we're asking you to put the trash depot there and they're working on that and that's taking.
So my cat's time.
Time and.
It's all about.
Insurance companies.
It's all about working together, this is all the same town.
Yeah.
So.
I'll make a motion to approve the Brookfield service annual generator maintenance contract for the town office and the school, we'll pay them both.
I'll second that.
Service twice a year.
Okay.
Acknowledging that they're accommodating us for town meeting and trash depot.
All right, um, do we have to sign both of these or something?
I think there's.
Is it?
The school has its own contract and they're, that's the one they're asking for contribution for, so they would probably pay us, invoice us. Yes, that's just the town.
Oh, two copies? Okay, return one, that's what I was gonna, I thought one was the school and one was the town.
No, no.
The same, all right, who do you, all right, so we have the motion, no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions here? None, motion carries. Who's going to sign this?
Any, I can sign it.
I was gonna say, yeah, you can sign it.
And I'll contact the school and advise them of your motion.
Okay, the last thing that we want to keep Sandra here for is to approve the renewal which Rose does with the dot gov domain, because we can't switch her, there's some weird semantics about it, so we, every year Rose pays for it on her credit card and we reimburse her.
Can't reassign it.
No, apparently not.
Well, next year we can use the town credit card to pay for it. I think.
Or we can change the town name to the town of Pelchuk.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That'd go over really well.
Then I want a new generator at my house. I can use, see, we'll have a credit card pretty soon and I can use the town credit card, but I think that I have to sign in from my own computer to do it, so.
That's part of the problem, right.
But we'll, we'll.
We'll give you the credit card information so you don't have to extend your own credit for that. Right. But for this year, Rose has already paid it, thank you again, you do whatever you do, thank you very much. So I would move that we authorize the treasurer to reimburse Madam Pelchuk for the renewal of the dot gov domain.
We can do that in a motion, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
I'm going to vote affirmative. I want my money.
No, we do not.
Yeah, four hundred bucks.
We do this every year.
Yeah, it used to be one twenty-five for all these years.
Is that just the bill?
No, Rose likes to do this.
Oh, okay, it's an accommodation, okay.
For transparency's sake, is that?
Yeah.
All right.
I get it.
Anything else, Madam Treasurer?
Uh, no, okay, you can, you're right along.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Sandra, I appreciate that.
No town clerk update? Town hall renovation, are you here for that, Scott?
I'm not sure, I was just here, this is Sandra talk. I love hearing Sandra talk.
Thank you, I'm going to tell my husband, somebody likes to hear.
You can take it to the video of it.
Good night.
I'm not going to steal this.
I have to say, we are so lucky to have Alfred on that is working on the town hall. I mean, it's, it's just, we had no idea when we signed him on how much he would be involved and it's, one, it's.
Is he doing the forming too?
No, 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 no. There's always, there's a lot of.
That's Ryan Perry's son still.
Yeah. And, and his acknowledge of construction has helped.
Yeah, yeah.
Which has been a bonus, you know, that we're not paying for.
And his energy, I mean, he just sort of helps keep it moving forward.
Yeah, and the road crew, I think, has liked, they've really enjoyed working on something different.
Yeah, it's, we've been very fortunate.
Yeah.
And it's getting there. I guess Wednesday the committee is going to hear from the, a proposal for rebuilding, renovating the interior.
Right.
And that'll take a long time, it costs a lot of money, but how long it takes and how much it costs.
Yeah, we're hoping to get the quote, the final quote from Greenline.
The renovations can take a long time, you said?
Well, it's, the interior stuff.
Right, they tend to take.
Like six months, a year, that long time, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, well, it could be all year, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we're also working with Don Marsh on coming up with some options for septic, so hopefully we'll have an update, get an update Wednesday morning on that. And then at some point we'll.
So that placement of, that placement of this extra soil that's being placed down there, that's not going to interfere with siding and septic system? It's not going near where they were.
The location that we're looking at right now is on Jeremy and his land, side of the road.
Oh.
And he's looked at holes and says, yeah, this will work.
Scott and John McCullough dug the holes.
Oh.
Shovels, long, I see, tubes are long-handed.
So we would lease, lease, hundred-year lease or something?
Well.
Right, that's for the select.
But what is the thinking?
We don't have one yet, really.
I, I think Jeremy's given it a lot of thought and so they're coming up with a proposal.
Oh, okay. How many acres is their building lot, are there a lot?
It's pretty small and it's very, very pretty shaped. But his, Marsh went through the whole thing with Jeremy and a lot of questions have been
So I think we're pretty close to bringing it to the full board, right, for a discussion?
Well, I think you and, yeah, you probably ought to sit down with Jeremy a little bit before, yeah, to get an idea of what he was, because he's been thinking about it and he's been ready to go for a couple of months.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Well, it's all stuff we've just been working on as the committee and getting it ready to bring to the full board.
Cool.
Yeah.
Was not sure, at all sure if it was going to work until Don Marsh looked at the percolates a week or so ago. Now he's on vacation for two weeks.
Yeah.
It's going along great.
Great.
Excellent.
And then we have St. de Vermont ISP, Scott and David. Thank you for coming.
David has done all the work.
I've done all the work.
He updated on this. He has got a lot of patience, I mean, he needs it.
Sounds like it's been quite the organizational.
Yes, I sent out a copy of what I'm going to talk on earlier.
Yes, should be in the folder.
And just want to say it's, thank you for pointing me to the board, all right? Not sure I'm going to say thank you, but anyway.
Thank you for.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for everything.
But no, it's a pretty exciting opportunity and I, I'm not sure I can really, you know, in terms of the way town meeting went and the vote was pretty overwhelming, it's going to take a long time.
Is it longer than you?
Well, I mean, it's money. And it's, as I mentioned in my thing, we're basically a municipal entity that can't tax. So although we have to comply with all the public meetings and public records laws, we have to find our own money to do this. And so the, we have a fundraising committee that just started last meeting, so we meet once a month, three hours, which is a very long, well, you guys probably meet three hours too, but it's a very long time to keep attention moving.
Where do you meet?
At, mostly at the Berlin Elementary School. And we met at the Middlesex Town Hall.
Of course, that probably gets, never mind.
Yeah, well, we're talking about Roxbury to Elmore, so it's sort of a, wow.
Look for a central location.
It's a, it's a.
Off of the interstate.
And I mean, this is the, the, this was in the bridge last week, if anybody saw the bridge. I get this map, basically is of.
That's not what you sent with the.
No, it's another map, which I meant to put this one in there, and I'll leave this with the clerk, whatever. But Elmore, Orange and Roxbury have the leased coverage with Callis, Worcester, Marshfield and Plainfield and Exors, in terms of speed and deployment of what's out there. Those three towns only have DSL from Consolidated Communications. We've been sort of modeling ourselves after EC Fiber, which is East Central Vermont Fiber, which has been underway for, I think, six years.
Wow.
And then now deployed in six towns and have three thousand people connected. They started off just doing the easiest roads they possibly could, now they're just saying we're going to do a town at a time, period, just even if there's not five houses on a mile, so.
And this is just fiber optic, right?
This is fiber optic, but the, the thing that you haven't heard yet is probably lately when you hear about 5G telecommunications, that all requires little microcellulars on top of telephone poles, which also requires fiber. So we don't know where that's going to go, but you can't have both, you got to have both to make that work, that system work. We're not even there yet. We haven't done any engineering or any planning to speak of, that's coming up, we still need money to do that, to hire somebody. We listened to how EC Fiber did their thing, they had some pretty savvy people already on their board. They already had an ISP that was going, a nonprofit ISP valued net in White River Junction. It actually put up some money to start this up. So they do all the billing, all the installations and all the, and so EC Fiber just raises money and hires engineering company to, to figure out where we have the things. They're not interested, but we're looking for a similar kind of arrangement.
They're not interested in expanding or clueless.
Well, they might be, I mean, we definitely will, will pursue that when we, when we get there. In terms of funding for the thing, we're looking at grants, you know, subscribers, go-to funding and, you know, if there's some, you know, EC Fiber had a sweet deal where somebody just gave them five hundred thousand dollars, some local resident, I know, it doesn't happen that often. They also got some of the American, you know, cash money funding, and then you got some telecommunications authority funding when that existed, and all that's gone now. If the legislature gets behind fiber to the home, which hopefully it might happen this next session, a chance to put some more of the trunk line stuff in, which is, you know, one of the critical pieces, it's thirty thousand dollars a mile to connect, to, to run the fiber and do the, the installation for all that. That is not going to the house. That's getting it down the road so we can go to the house.
Wow.
So the way EC Fiber works and the way Kingdom Fiber, which is the newest one up in, up in this kingdom, is that the homeowner, I think EC Fiber will amortize the cost over a period to the homeowner, but it, it's not cheap to.
So does the homeowner in those places pay from?
The connection to the house.
And that's expensive, yeah?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's not as expensive as the, the fiber, but it's another.
What is expensive?
Four hundred, five hundred dollars?
Six, five thousand.
No, 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 oh, no. But the devices that you put in your house that connect this are like six dollars and it runs everything. I mean, it's.
Unbelievable.
I mean, it's hard to believe that Consolidated Communications or Comcast have not thought this through because, I mean, granted, this utility doesn't have to make money, it has to cover its costs.
Right.
I, I think you can have high-speed fiber to the house for about a hundred dollars a month.
Have you, have you thought about, I'm sure you have, in talking with Washington Electric about teaming up with them, since they own poles and they got crews and.
Oh, Washington Electric, Washington Electric.
Washington is here and I've been talking to Bill and Barry Bernstein about what kind of relationship the district might have with, with the co-op. The co-op is definitely interested in participating in this.
Ruth, awesome.
Well, I think.
Just because we have great.
How are you here?
Yeah.
Well, wait, no, I can say, because I'm on camera, I'm not here officially, I was invited, but I saw David was going to present and I'm absolutely.
He's, he's, he's very interested.
Whack is very interested, I can tell this group that our board, a commission of our board, not last week, and we're advised, and the hook has been set, but the date hasn't been made, so it's going to have a good view of it soon.
So what happens to us people who have Hardwick Electric?
Well.
You live in West Town, you're going to get served. Take care.
But that's just the poles. We don't know what kind of relationship, you know, because right now you have to pay, I think it's a dollar fifteen or more per pole per month, so it's all fourteen dollars a pole just to have the wire on the pole. So those have to be factored in there and whatever kind of relationship, that's regulated by the Public Service Commission, so I don't know how that's going to sugar out over time.
Department or the board?
PUC.
The PUC, the commission. No, it's no longer the Public Utility, Public Utilities Commission. They went from Public Services Board to Public Utilities Commission. Anyway, it is pretty complicated stuff. We have been going real slow in, in terms of getting embroiled in any of the regulatory aspects of that kind of stuff. The board, I attached the members of the board.
I saw it.
And looks like old white men.
It is.
Which is too bad.
Well, except for I was glad to see that, I was glad to see that Michael Brunnbaum was part of this.
Yeah, and that's an interesting case. He, we, last meeting we asked about conflicts of interest, went around the room.
Yeah.
And he clearly has a conflict of interest.
Right.
I mean, he is running not only Cloud Alliance, he's running Kingdom Fiber.
Oh, he is?
And, yeah, he's, there's no, no, no moths in that guy. He's doing this because he sees this is the way to go. He's really behind it.
Right.
He stands to lose a good deal of Cloud Alliance in, in this model. And he doesn't know what the future of Kingdom Fiber is either, I mean, they have the money to do Craftsbury and Hardwick, I mean, no, not Hardwick, even though the wire goes to Hardwick.
Craftsbury and Greensboro.
In Greensboro, yes. So it's sort of an interesting experiment. I think the next thing you'll hear from us is we're gonna be wanting to do a survey of households, whether we do every one or we do every sixth one, just to get a sense of interest, willingness to give up what they currently have, to sign on.
Are you gonna do that through front porch forum?
I, my proposal is to do a front porch forum, but there are people who, but the question is, there are people who have no internet at all. So how do you reach them? So we have to figure out a strategy. So we'll be doing that probably, we need it, we don't wanna do the survey until we can tell everybody what we think we're gonna do.
Right.
Yeah. And I think we're getting close to that. So that'll be in the next couple of months, I believe.
Have you, I can interrupt?
Yeah, please.
So many moons ago, Vermont towns used to straight pipe their sewage right into the rivers, right?
Yep.
And their water supplies were hither and yon and unreliable. So they got federal support, financial support, and they started building wastewater treatment facilities. And they were pretty low-level treatment facilities. And then the time came that everybody had to do these upgrades, bring up the newer standards. And how is that done? So it wasn't all fin, and the towns couldn't afford it, you know, out of pocket. So they came up with this thing, this state camp, but this new program called revolving loan program. And they funded both water supply system work and wastewater system work. And you borrow this money, it's for little or no interest, and it gets approved, it's managed by the Agency of Natural Resources, and then you make payments over time. And, you know, I see this is very similar, it's something very expensive.
We've been talking about that.
Oh, okay, okay.
You just have, you know, there's a couple items to go to the legislature on.
Yeah.
That's one of them.
And if you teamed with WAC, if WAC wanted to be kind of, they already have billing systems and.
They have.
You know, they used to do this, what was that, what was that internet service you guys used to? BT Link. But I wanna correct you. I think David's laid out a model and I don't wanna speak for him or the group, I'm not there yet. But I don't think WAC will ever be in the retail part of this.
Really?
You guys know, EC Fiber, they already got, they're making dumbness, they're doing it. What we can offer is the attachment and a quid pro quo. I think that's the offer, is if you live on our lines and you're a WAC member, and this attachment part that David kind of glossed over is really important, this dollar fifty for 14 feet, order the numbers, that, that's the nut we have to crack, is what's the basis? Because unlike other utilities, we own the whole pole, we don't have to share it with anybody. All other utilities share like joint usage and ownership. And so it creates a different tension about who's attaching to those poles. We don't have that. So the good news is it's just one owner. And we're not looking to be in the retail space, the billing space or the content space. What we wanna do is leverage the asset and give the member a deal that we could negotiate on behalf of all of our members.
So one of our mantras is to make this a local business. I mean, all, find a local, you know, keep the, keep the money in central Vermont. Now, can we do that on everything? Probably not, but to the extent we can, we will. The other thing is looking for major subscribers like town government, schools, getting them connected into. The way EC Fiber does, are schools anyway, is they give them the lowest rate and they get the highest speed. So they're not paying, the, the schools are getting a real, like, I think, I think it's $69 a month for 700 megabits per second. So they're, they're figuring out that. I'm not sure what our pricing model's gonna be. EC Five has got three pricing levels. And they are doing pretty remote towns. I, the, the map I gave you is probably not very self-explanatory, but.
They're all dots.
Those are buildings. Those are the E sites, that's the E 911.
Okay.
Those are E 911 buildings in Callis. And what I did is I counted them using the computer, not by hand, how many buildings were on each road segment, which in 911 roads is less than three quarters of a mile typically. And so we were looking to see, you know, the payback is really five houses per mile or six houses per mile. How many do we have, you know? And so anything here that's blue and green is, easily makes it. But the plan is, you know, at this point to do it everywhere, but where we can't do it. Oh, you have it, nice. Can't see the, oh, it's.
See how fancy we are now?
You guys are great. So these are the kinds of things I've been doing on my own, being semi-retired, I can do great GIS stuff now. I can, I don't have to count them anymore, you know, I get the tools. The other thing, when I did this count, there were, I have 878 buildings in Callis. 621 of those, but I didn't hand this out, this is stuff that I've done since the map. But based on that map, there's 621 buildings that we had over four houses per segment. And that was 47 miles of road. So, so you can see it doesn't cover all of Callis' roads, but you're getting 72% of everybody in town on that criteria. Now, that was just, you know, my figuring out, well, those are the easy, the easy get-to houses.
And the red.
To run $30,000 a mile, that would be one and a half million dollars just for Callis to do it. But you amortize it, you know, it's like, that's a fixed cost.
Yeah.
So, and if everybody paid, 50% of Callis signed up for this and they paid $80 a month, it'd be generating $400,000 a year. Wow. So it actually, you know, the numbers.
What would the net be on that, 'cause you're paying to access?
Oh, I didn't know, yeah, it's, my, my guess, everybody's saying 80, I'm thinking it's gonna be closer to 100 because the pole, and all the things just add up. And, and it's gonna take a little while to sort that out.
Yeah.
So is, are WAC representatives attending meetings or are you attending theirs or?
No, I, I'm just gonna meet with Barry and Bill and Patty. I met with Velco, which is the Vermont Electric, CEO.
It's the transmission company.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Out where?
Out of, out of distribution utility, they're the big pipes, the big wires.
And they have fiber, they have fiber pretty much all around the state, but not to Callis. I found that out. There's something over cost?
Well, it actually runs right behind the WAC office, it's GMP's line. See, that's the rub, is again, back to Callis, the town is not exclusively WAC. They always have the other, another utility. So there's this division of pole asset types even in the same community.
I think I don't, I mean, you might be on Hardwick, I think there's somebody on Marsville. No, that's Elmore.
Yeah.
It's, it's strange number of utilities.
There's swaths through east Callis, up by my house into north Callis.
I think there's 13 houses, to tell you the truth.
And it's.
That's it?
Yeah. It's, it's weird, I don't even know why we have Hardwick Electric, but.
And they don't have anything.
Right on.
The town, the other town garage has Hardwick.
Yes, and none of their data is digital, which, I mean, WAC's, all their line data, polls is digital. Bring Mountain Power's data is digital.
And our power goes out a lot.
Yeah. But let me think, is there anything else in here? So you're gonna be seeing a draft annual report and budget from the utilities.
And that's what I was gonna ask you.
It's coming next week. We have to get it adopted. It has to go to all towns. I believe you need to act on it. I'm not exactly sure on all the, the rules that, we are now learning all the.
Well, I know Jim Barlow's on the policy committee or something, right?
Correct, yes, yeah.
So I just wanted to let you know that we're starting to work on the town report, town budget. And it would be great if you could put in a piece about this.
Oh, I will.
Where you're at in the town report, because I know people were pretty excited when they heard about it last year.
And the other thing I haven't been able to do, all the minutes are on a Google Drive, but they're not public. And I want, I'm trying to figure out how to get the drive separated so half of it can be public and half of it.
Now, that's not a town entity, so we can't, can we put anything up on the town website?
I'd rather just put links to everything.
Well, no, that's what I mean, we could put, we could put a link to something.
And then I wanna link all the.
A link is okay?
I wanna put a link to all the Orca meetings, 'cause they, they tape them all.
Oh, they do?
And they're pretty interesting.
I bet. In my spare time, I will watch.
Yeah, but I don't know, some people do. I mean, it was, it was pretty amazing how many people do watch it. So there's, there were 15 towns that voted this at town meeting, and we've had one town joined by Slickwood vote, because that's the way it works now, you don't have to have a town meeting, so. Don't ask me why, so Orange joined. Why Water, uh, Woodbury has not joined, I'm not sure.
You might try them again.
And at this point, the group is solely, well, you know how unruly a six-member board can get? Probably a 15-member board.
Of old white men.
Of old white men.
Of old white men.
What's wrong with Trump?
I don't know, John said that. Spark opinions.
Anyway. But it's a pretty productive group, although, you know, without having a real organization and somebody who's worked full-time driving it and everything's happening, it's, it's really hard.
I, yeah, no, I mean, I.
But we'd probably be coming back to you as a town, I mean, right now, I don't know who you'd get any service from, it's probably Consolidated Communications, but we'll be certainly looking to have you change your contract.
So right now, you can, right now, you can bundle with Fairpoint Consolidated or whatever, but Consolidated's under review or something, aren't they with the Public Service Department?
They're in some deep due.
Yeah.
And the same failures that Fairpoint was accused of has now in spades end again.
Right.
Worse.
And I hate to tell you, there's, there's fiber line running all down County Road from Fairpoint, from Consolidated. It's just not connecting to many.
And all up on these two.
Does that make any sense?
Uh, they, they're a revenue generating outfit, they must, they must make profit and so.
15 per mile.
But why, but, say what?
They need 15 hookups per mile, three times what these guys are.
I was gonna say, 15, that's a lot in a whole community.
They go.
Our average is eight per mile, is how it is, again, thanks.
WAC's average is eight per mile?
Yeah, that's 41 towns, so it's really not representative of Callis, but it's an average, yeah.
Well, thank you, I'm glad you guys are all working on our behalf.
Hopefully the next time, even for the town report, hopefully I'll more, I'll add in.
And some, and some figures so people can start thinking about.
So while Phil's here, and I'm not pressuring WAC, but I always wonder why, why utilities like WAC and Hardwick generally aren't in the fiber optic internet. Let's take it off, off-line, John. I would say that's. Just, just general, of all you co-ops. Okay, so what I'm pleased to say is that the Vermont law was, statute was changed back in 98 to allow an electric co-op to be in the telecom. So we have, we have statutory authority. And in that era, like the pre, in the late 90s, early aughts, there was this broadband over power line notion. And frankly, the notion still works, 'cause power is how, if you're a WAC member, that's how we read your meter.
Oh.
Problem is, internet requires that the signal go from the transformer down to the lower voltage into the member's location. And every step is a big expense. It's not so much getting the signal into the line, we do that. It's the through rate, the body rate on power line carrier for billing is really slow. 'Cause that's all it needs to do, just grab the number, put it in the box. But if you're joining to broadband, real broadband, you know, the speeds that David was talking about, can't do it. Because of the transformer interference. Well, there's three issues, that and the fact that in order to make the system work, you have to build it out to the end of the system, right? You gotta, you can't just do it, if you're midway between the sub and the line, we still have to build it all the way out to make it work. 'Cause we don't want it to stop where you are.
Yes.
So anyway, the, the take rate and the price point that David was alluding to, like Consolidated or Cloud Alliance or offering, I think those are very, you know, useful metrics. That's what the members are gonna look at and say, what do you got for me? So hopefully we come up with some sweet spot between.
And every time the town meeting gets here, you know, you may have some on your phone, you can always get up and, you know, spout out some figures or numbers or whatever.
Well, frankly, this meeting that David anticipates Barry Bernstein, our president of our board, would be really useful. I think Barry's very interested. If you're a WAC member and you know Barry, you might, you know, add your voice, because that's what it takes. And, you know, frankly, the day-to-day of running a utility is distracted enough, and this is new business. So we've gotta find a space and still set up the deal with the business. But I think it can be done, and I'm personally very interested, I wanna see this happen. I wanna see our poles used for more than just carrying the incumbents, you know?
So the other, the other thing we're very painful with is customer service is everything.
Right.
Based on Consolidated Communications.
Yeah.
And in Comcast, I mean, really.
No, because you also, the WAC poles, pull carry the phone lines, right? So somewhere along the way, something got worked out with the phone companies and power companies, however many moons ago, to share.
Well, they have to.
They have to share, yeah.
Okay.
The process is called pole attaching entities, and David alluded to the formula, so there's this cookie cutter approach. If you're a phone guy or if you're a telecom guy, here's your formula, pay them in.
Pay them.
And in order to get help from under that regulatory construct, to get to a place where we can have a quid pro quo, we'll let you build on our own lines in exchange for a discount over time or something like that. We gotta do it a different way, we have to have a.
And the phone companies aren't gonna have a problem with this, 'cause they're really.
No, that's, that's the sore spot, that's absolutely.
They are gonna have a problem.
They're gonna flip out, there's gonna be.
They're gonna lose business.
It depends how well you sell the program now.
Right.
If you have Comcast or Consolidated putting black fiber down County Road and not energizing it.
Right. I didn't even know it was there.
I knew it was there.
And when you see the spices between poles, there's an orange cable in there. That's, that's.
That's, that's.
I knew it was there.
I'll have to look for it when I'm not driving.
Yeah, maybe one in your road, no. Yeah, and I had one more little thing that was triggered by that, but I can't remember it now. Brain, brain first.
Yeah, 'cause Consolidated isn't gonna wanna see.
Oh, that was it. I, yeah, no, it's, but in EC Fiber, they've been, you know, they're in the six towns now, every house.
You know, actually, it might be better for them, because one less thing to deal with and they can maybe fix the other problems that they have. I'm trying to be positive.
Yeah.
For them, a selling, a selling point, selling point. Well, thank you very much, you guys.
Yes, thank you very much.
Very interesting, and it sounds like.
It'll keep you posted.
Is there a talk about going to the legislature this year?
Oh, yeah. And Jeremy Hansen is the chair of the board, the select board chair from Berlin. He's running for, he's running for representative from Berlin. And there is now a joint, joint House Senate Technology Committee, which is hot on this issue. Both, I knew the Democratic candidate is pretty hot on fiber. And the question is really putting the, you know, money where their mouth's at. But, yeah, it would miss, a bunch of, a bunch of opportunities have been missed, I think, to do it rationally.
Yeah.
Yeah, the state, with whatever money, build a fiber line down 89, so that's how EC Five, EC Five is pulling off of that.
Right, yeah, I never heard of that.
And then.
And then it goes up to St. Johnsbury.
St. Johnsbury over to Newport to Hardwick. We got left out, the central part of the state, and the southeastern part of the state, southwestern part of the state, still left out, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, nice to see you.
Thank you, WAC.
Yes, thank you, Bill.
Thanks, David. Thanks for being an alternate or whatever you are, Scott.
Have you gone to some of the meetings yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you better not go to meetings.
I think David was very generous with his tone.
Great.
And there was videos. There was videos on video, 13 years.
Okay, I'll have to.
Thank you, Orca.
Who cares, I guess, he's watching.
I know, that's the thing, is I would like to do, it's like, oh, yes, I think you know where you was finding, where's the, the link to the Orca?
Same place as ours, as ours.
No, but I mean, if you wanted to look at them, what's the.
She can just Google video and you can find them on YouTube.
'Cause you guys have a website, right?
We have your own.
We don't have one. We have a name, we have a name and.
Oh, they're on the Orca website, must be.
Orca website.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
They're on the Orca YouTube site, as well as the station. No, I, thank you, Orca. It's a great service. That was a very dramatic meeting, the last one. I didn't film it, but so, for good.
Okay, now I'm curious.
They, they, that's a conflict, connection conflict, they're just, they have to say my affiliate or meet with the person.
Wait, did you talk to them on the phone?
No.
Oh. I bet that was.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, thank you.
They fly in. Road crew must not do much for them.
I know, you can email them. Fill me a letter. All right. So let's get talking about, did you move that road naming policy thing? Okay, very good. Poor Katie, she's trying to keep up with our meetings and moving things from this folder to this folder to this folder. You're doing a fabulous job, thank you. All right, let's look at the road naming policy.
Road naming ordinance.
Road naming ordinance.
And I don't wanna call it an ordinance, then we have to go through that whole ordinance process, we're gonna call it a policy. I don't think we need to have an ordinance, I don't think it's that big a deal enough to warrant being an ordinance.
Did you forget to pay your bill again?
Yeah. It cuts out one of this time.
It's probably really slow, they're on.
There it is.
Oops.
Okay.
Oops, there it is.
Barlow's got a new letter on the other side.
I was gonna say, yeah, that's not the right spelling. Now, is this in Google Docs, Katie, so we can make some notes? Okay, I wanna make a note, whoever's running the show here, that it's, did Barlow name this?
Katie, are you gonna do the changes?
I can, yeah.
Where's the whole comment box?
She's gotta type it in.
Yeah, so technically savvy. Now Denise, who didn't wanna even think about doing this four years ago, she said, oh, you have Google Docs, can you update?
Yeah, well, I don't do any of that part of it. I just ask, please.
Click, I opened it as a Google Doc, so they're not gonna see in lifetime, like changes.
Oh, okay.
And mine's just still trying to think.
Well, it'll take it a minute to get to. It's tired tonight.
It's trying.
All right. Is it still thinking, it's blank?
We had like, really super fast internet, that'd be cool.
Wouldn't it?
That'd be sweet.
You mean, something like through some Vermont ISP?
Yeah.
I just disappeared. Yeah, somebody should.
It's.
Well, okay, I'm here. Bliss got it, so we can just start, I'm here, yep, all right. We just need to scroll down. Let's, can we make a note to change it from ordinance to policy?
And there's no, the end of his name, right?
She just, she just asked that. And she's changed her policy.
Look at that.
Okay, so will it just automatically change it?
Yeah, see, we just, it'll show the changes, she's doing them, and then we can accept it as a final document.
Here's this ordinance again, is there a way to like, you know how many words you can do, find all kinds of things? By ensuring that emergency services can locate, address, expediently, efficiently, effectively.
Denise, is this a model policy from VLCT?
I think we, no, I think Sharon found one from another town, VLCT didn't actually have one.
Yeah, I should have.
Was it Berlin?
I think Berlin and Eastmont, too.
Yeah, no, Eastmont didn't have one.
They didn't have one, okay, that was Berlin only.
Yeah, I thought it was Berlin. All right. Hi, Joe.
Sneaking out early. Please put the camera on here.
Okay.
This is, this is a family hour presentation here, you gotta watch, language here.
Oh, new names, safety? All right, so where it says a uniform road naming or addressing system of the health and safety of the public by ensuring that emergency services.
So, John, should we also put in the.
Okay. Assigning a road name. Okay, I know Rose and I have this thing about select board, we like it to be one word capitalized. We get to do that, right, Rose?
That's right.
I know that others don't necessarily always agree.
I agree with that.
Okay.
We gotta smarten the computer up to understand if that's.
Right, good night, Joe, good night.
Good night.
And then it's up there.
Snow.
You'll have to go seek and find, yep.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, it's getting pretty.
Wow, cool.
I have every district, every distinct road. Okay, changing a road name. We're not gonna, you know, tonight, we're just kinda going through it, and then we can get a new draft and.
It'll take three determined.
I don't know, can we change a private road? Name, I think we need to, can we put a note there to double check and make sure that we have the authority to change private road names? I'm not sure we have that authority.
Maybe that connoisseur will have it three or more residences or.
Yeah, I just wanna, wanna check it out.
Yeah, we should definitely write that.
Yeah. Okay.
You go what? Well, I think actually that the town could force the change of a private road, but there was a private, a person wanted to name their private road, Peking Brook Road, I think we could say no.
Right, but they.
Because it would cause confusion and.
But they have to come to the select board when they want to change or create the name of a private road. What I'm not sure is the select board has the authority to change a private road name, which is what that's.
Atheres in.
Right, which is what this says.
I don't know, I think so, I think if he, we'll find out.
Yeah.
Nine-one-one board says a problem, there's a road of the same name in Eastmont Hill area, people are going to the wrong place.
Yeah, I mean, there could be reasons why, I just wanna make sure.
Like Bliss, Bliss, that's a problem. The way he backed up, says private road owners may coordinate, I think it shouldn't be shall.
Yes.
Is that just a, or is it actually a screwy out?
No, it just should.
Can you take it into paper?
Yeah. Good catch.
I already won some approvals and shares, so quickly do.
Ready to go down?
Good job.
Okay, so those are the. SM, oh, Sharon's note, I couldn't find either reason. I thought, yeah, I thought the, an answer to Sharon's question, I thought the state or the E nine-one-one.
Is federal.
Is it, isn't it? Is it federal?
Mut, mutua, MU, municipal uniform, MUTA or.
MUTA, I think.
Yeah, municipal uniform traffic control.
Can you put a little question mark up on that?
MUTA.
TIA?
No, TA.
Just TA, I don't know, municipal.
Maybe at the end of Sharon's, at the end of Sharon's note, we can just put a, check the MUTA.
Traffic control devices, no, traffic.
Control manual.
Is something, is something manual?
Control.
Probably, actually probably Alfred knows.
I don't know, and that's not the name of the orange book?
MUTCD.
Yeah, that name.
Uniform traffic control devices.
Yeah, so let's put a note to check that.
It's federal.
Yeah, so that. Yeah, that we talk about the size of the letters and the refunds. Did anybody notice how the signs at Eastmont Hill are smaller?
Yeah, you mentioned that.
Did you see that?
No, so are we, so are we overdoing it, or are they?
We're supposedly, we're following the standards.
I don't know, but Eastmont Hill, the signs are, the signs and the letters are smaller.
So Katie, it's in, I don't, it's not showing up on your screen, but.
Oh, okay, it's there, all right.
The note is in there, okay.
As long as you have the resources, you.
Um, from the E nine-one-one manual, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Okay.
I don't know if this is what Eastmont Hill is doing, on secondary highways and city streets, smaller signs may be used if authorized by lawful authority, meaning the state allows.
So maybe that's what they're doing.
Deviations from standard sizes are prescribed here and, as prescribed here, and shall be in six inch increments.
So we shared nicely, thank you for sharing.
Thanks, John.
Hope we weren't too loud.
Hope we weren't too loud.
You were loud.
Good night, thank you.
All right, well, this is, so, can you go back up to what that headed, said?
Addressed.
Okay, that's good to have in there.
So that was, so that is actually how Ian figures it out.
Right.
Posting a designated address.
Posting.
Oh, yeah, so that's the entrance.
Okay, I'll take the other half.
Okay, multi-unit structures. The owner, wait a minute, the owner of the multi-unit structure should, should display one number for the entire building and a manner visited from the road, each unit shall affix. So which is it, should or shall? You see what I'm getting at?
Should, shall, shall.
Right.
Right.
But I don't know that you can force people to affix the number, because up above it says, says may, we strongly.
But then we're saying you shall, but, you know, you get numbers on.
I think up above it says, it's strongly encouraged, but I don't think you can make somebody do it.
One of your multi-unions can, I don't know.
This is a road naming policy, you can't, you could make somebody number their structure.
Some people wanna anonymity, you know, concern.
Yeah, so I think shall shouldn't be shall. Maybe say, it said should, which is more flexible.
Should.
Okay. The sign is playing the prior, prior, prior to issuing a zoning permit, I'm missing a word.
Put the word two in there, prior to issuing a zoning permit.
Shall procure from the select board. Okay, and we defer to, our designee is the E nine-one coordinator. The owner of any new residence or address shall display. See, I don't, again, I don't know, it goes back and forth, some places it should or shall, so I'm not sure, I guess I have a.
Where did this original template come from?
I think we said it was from Berlin.
Oh, okay.
And I can't, I don't know for sure, but I think that's what Sharon said, because yours is the owner of any new residence or address, shall. And up above it says something different, so I think we could put some question.
But that's new residents, is what existing ones don't have, I don't understand.
Yeah, so we need to put some question marks there.
Pursuant to Article four above. What's Article four?
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, see.
That one, posting of it.
See, and here it says, they're strongly encouraged.
Right.
So then down, and now, down in this section, we're saying you have to, prior to issuing, the property owner developer shall procure, blah, blah, blah.
Prior to issuing, the property owner shall procure from the select board.
An official address for each new business or residence, okay, that's funny. The owner of any new residence or address shall display.
Yeah, should, I think.
Yeah, I think it's a should be should again, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think most people would do it, they're so happy that they have a new house, they're gonna put numbers on, but.
Well, maybe they are, but you can't, right, because we have to make it one section and agree with the other section, okay? All right.
And it says, display the official number on the president, premises in a permanent fashion.
Right.
And like, I have the eight-hundred-foot driveway, I don't have a number on my house, but I have a number at the end of the road.
Right, you can't even see them.
So it's not on my premises.
Right.
Unless you qualify.
It's on your premises.
The end of my road is my premises.
It's not on your residence.
Yeah, new private roads on development. Okay. Shall propose road names to the select board, okay? Vandalism. You gotta catch them first, I mean, how many times has, Lightning Ridge roadside been stolen and we don't.
Is that from the statute, can't find them out?
I don't know, and Sharon's not here to ask where she got it from, so we have some questions for her. All offices of the Vermont State Police, shall we recognize?
That's.
I don't know, I guess you have questions.
I mean, I guess you could put it in there, but.
Who's gonna enforce it, you know, you gotta catch them.
Who's gonna be standing there waiting for them to catch it?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you can't catch them.
Oh, I copied, and then now that she's saying, I copied these, generally, these, failure policy. Yeah, I don't think we want, does anybody else think we need an ordinance or just a policy?
No, policy.
So we don't need all this ordinance stuff, but we can leave it in there for now.
Yeah.
Okay, good, we got through it, yay. Thank you, Katie. Now we're ready to talk about the credit card policy. Now Sharon had done some. And I went in and got her.
General information stuff that you posted.
Right, that was just what I took from VLCT's policy. And then. Yeah, that's just kind of.
Here's where Sharon starts.
Yeah, but I had included, I think. Okay.
There are changes in there.
Can you see, can we see the changes that Sharon made?
Let me go over here and do it this way, then you should be able to see them.
But there's an existing Google Doc version. There was one that Sharon worked on, and then I looked at that and made some other comments.
Okay, this must not be that one.
Right, that's the only thing that I get confused about with Google Docs, is which one is the current version.
It's owned by Sharon.
Here it is.
That's it, yep.
Why does it say me on there, who's me?
Me.
Oh, that's you, okay.
I didn't even see.
Okay, it's pretty bad when the road naming policy's longer, the credit card policy. All right, so yes, I included that other piece out of the VLCT stuff, just for general information.
Okay.
Control and use for town, as a town credit card issue through. I don't know if we wanted, I don't know if we ever switched the banks, you'd have to remember to update this policy. So I don't know if we should say the name of the bank, or just.
Was that your idea to put that in there, or Sharon's idea?
Sharon's.
Yeah, I don't think.
Well, we wanna tie ourselves to.
You could call it a valid credit card.
Right.
Right.
Or, do you mean to put a comment?
We may have a multiple of credit cards, it just says two here.
Well, we authorized the treasurer and the town clerk to have a credit card, and that was it.
But I can see a scenario, not actually we're on it yet, but like, we all have two different, or three different credit cards, right? And one we use all the time, but we always have some.
That's fair.
There might be, we, we might have one from a different issuing entity for some particular reason, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, the idea over here was, the bulk of our transactions would continue the way we normally do.
Yeah, that's true.
Small pieces of business that come up, it would just be easier to conduct.
Yeah, once in a while. I've had, I've had to use my personal credit card three or four times now.
Here's the example right here.
Yeah, the dot gov.
The dot gov, so.
So, anyways, that's where that's at, but I don't think we wanna tie ourselves.
Yeah, no, you don't have to say who the issuing agency is, no.
What would you like it to say? Town credit card issued through a bank.
It doesn't even have to say that, just say.
Issue.
A town credit card.
Well, that's true.
On a shared town account with.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of like wordy.
Yeah. I don't know.
Town clerk and the town treasurer.
Maybe I brought them in at some point.
To each hold.
A town credit card with a credit limit of five thousand dollars on the account.
Yeah.
I won't tell you more daddy.
But even if you put with a credit limit of five thousand dollars, period, you don't have to write on the account, you know what it is, right?
Right.
So it'll, it'll read, the town clerk, the town treasurer to each hold and use for a town business, a town credit card.
With a five thousand dollar limit.
With a credit limit of five thousand dollars.
There you go, not worse.
I think what she was trying to imply that they would not each have a card that's valued at five thousand.
Well.
It would be one account.
Right, one account with a five thousand dollar limit, why don't we just say that?
So why do you have to specify that one is gonna be for the town clerk and one is gonna be for the treasurer?
Because they have the authority to sign. They're the only authorized signers.
So change it to.
In their custody, right?
Yeah, delete from the account. And it can be with a total credit limit of five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And then you can do a seek and change for all the lowercase separate select board.
Because Rose and I have that authority.
Apparently, we also have the authority, or soon we'll have the authority rename private roads, we can have a lot of fun with that.
Make a lot of fun. Okay. Do you want to move down?
Do you care for any notes? Do you care for any notes?
Sure, thank you.
There's cake, Jerome.
Would you like a piece of cake?
Um, okay, thank you.
And there's nuts too.
Are we ready to move down?
Okay, so can only be used, issued by the named cardholder. So the cardholder is gonna be the town of Calis, right?
Right, because I was thinking of the situation we had tonight with the dot gov domain. Because if you order something online, you don't have, you don't sign anything, it just has town of Calis on it?
Yeah, we can. Before we finalize it, we can ask Sandra to make sure that everything's congruent.
Yeah, she hasn't weighed in on this yet, so I'm thinking like, this is draft, second draft.
Since this is, I mean, the reason we're looking at this, we think it's such a serious matter, I would suggest what the state does. And the line that says employees may be subject to disciplinary action for misuse of credit card.
Mm-hmm.
I would suggest that we augment that to say employees may be subject to disciplinary action up to and including dismissal.
Oops, says.
That way there's no debate whether it's a first infraction, this is that.
Oh, okay, so.
Right?
Oh, it kind of says that at the end, did I get that wrong?
Hmm?
Read the sentence, they sure is what you.
I need to, up to and including dismissal.
Or misuse. I don't want the town credit card, and then it says it again.
Oh!
It says it again there, so I have. I've kind of.
A little disclosure of misuse.
Can we make it, I'm assuming that means we, we would make it, we could make it public if we tried.
Oh, I don't think, say that, I don't think we have.
Like tar and feather?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
We'll hang them in stocks in the town square, and that's what we.
So do you want that section removed?
Yeah, I think that's overkill. It's tar and feather, I like that, because. We're north of the Mason.
Card payment, interest and fees. Now where.
That generates fees.
What are you doing there?
That's kind of weird, yeah.
We're not allowed to use it for any illicit stuff.
Right.
But.
So, you know, our treasurer.
Depends on the timing.
Uses it to pay a bill and it costs the town three dollars.
Well, there was somewhere, I think that I had. I thought I made a comment on that section, but I don't see it. In the comment side? No?
No, I think this is all ridiculous, this is a payment thing.
Well, this is the VLCT version, so it's really in depth, just so you know.
Yeah, it's pay your bills on time, I mean.
I do see under the card payments there, if I click on, where you've highlighted it, is this your comment, can we get this set up as an EFT payment?
Yeah, that one, my comment.
Are you able to see that there?
No. My suggestion was that we see if we can.
Oh, just read it to Megan.
Um, can we get this set up as an EFT payment? If not, we'll have to maybe put in writing, as we've done with other invoices, to pay and approve after the fact.
Oh.
Yeah, because remember how we have a certain.
If the bill comes, pay it.
EFT, automatic.
It's automatic, automatic payment on your checking account.
Oh, okay, it's called EFT.
Here it is.
Yeah, that's my.
Yeah, but is that gonna screw up Sandra's system?
Uh, no, it's EFT, it doesn't.
No.
No. But that's why I put it there, I want her to weigh in on what's gonna be the best way to ensure timely payment, basically.
I, I don't like this interest fees, I think it's. I think you need a proctologist here to do this, this is like really micro.
I think, I mean, it's actually pretty much what we're saying.
I think it's insulting, I don't know.
Insulting to who?
I think, I just think it's. It should say, the town, we pay our bills on time anyways, like, we have a special policy for this set of bills, it's a bill.
Yeah.
It's like any other bill, it's, we take out a loan on a truck, we don't say that the road commissioner shall ensure that the truck payment is made monthly basis and no interest on the truck, adding our penalties, I mean, come on, it's every loan we have, it's another loan.
So what I'm saying, this is a VLCT.
Yeah, I know, I know, I think it's.
Document, we don't have to do it exactly as they say.
Right.
This is their recommendation.
I think it's.
So we don't think we need that section.
What if we just delete all of that except for the very last sentence?
Where's the, where does it start, the last sentence?
The treasurer shall monitor fees and interest.
That's okay.
And if changes.
Yeah.
Because we all know that, that happens with credit cards. Oh, guess what, we're gonna start cards giving out.
I'm with you on that.
So let's just strike that, okay?
Good.
Security. We suggested, that was a suggestion that Sandra made in one of her memos.
Can we just say stored in the vault?
Yeah.
It has to be a secure location in the vault.
The saw, I assume, but, well, of course, during the day, you've got all kinds of people in and out of the vault.
Okay, then, just leave it.
Um, looking up records and all that stuff, so.
They don't have any lock boxes in the vault.
Well, I think that's the point, is we should probably.
Set, set that up, yeah. Vault within the vault.
You know, and that, that's the part that like, really would be weird, like, if I had to take the credit card to my house to pay the dot gov. Because it says that you, you can't loan it to other employees.
Well, what you would do in that case.
Wouldn't be a loan, but.
What they would do in that case is they would give you the credit card information over the phone.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Because there's nothing to swipe.
Right. So my, I think I had a comment.
Did you? After the word lost. I think if you, if you click on it.
I can't see my comment, I can't remember what I said.
If you.
Click on the word lost.
And her comment is just a little bit under the screen there.
Yeah, I want, I thought maybe it should say lost, stolen or compromised, because sometimes credit card information gets stolen.
No, it says compromised.
That's what I saw.
Compromised.
I agree with compromised, I'm not.
Yeah, I'll, I'm done with compromised.
Okay. Just a second. Looks like a Donald Trump tweet.
And then he.
Just wait a few minutes to wait out some making an official spelling.
Right. Spelled. That hard to read a spell, isn't it?
It's contain, it's a containment that's going around the room here.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yep.
That makes sense, because we have to keep all that stuff for audits.
Yeah, the one thing I saw in this section. For telephone purchases, documents, documentation include a fax copy.
Yeah, I made a note.
Okay.
What's a fax?
Yeah, exactly, just a copy of the receipt is fine.
Right, where's, I don't know where my notes.
Copy of the itemized receipt.
Stored, it'd be stored on an A track.
It's a matchbook code for it. Underneath it to keep the heads aligned.
We don't have a fax machine. Okay, so this is draft two. Do we have a date on this?
It's called draft ten eight eighteen.
So the separation thing, prior to separation from the town cardholder will surrender the credit card with the select board. If this, if they're sitting in the vault.
I, I just, I think it's just a.
They're sitting in the vault.
We wanna make sure somebody doesn't leave.
Someone that can surrender by saying it's in the vault.
Right. Okay, so can we, how do we wanna name this, so we can have it? I mean, name it ten fifteen or something, eighteen, draft policy?
Draft ten fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we know which version we're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
Change the header from VLCT to probably, get rid of that. Gets the Calis, Calis credit card, draft credit card policy. Title block.
Okay, wow, we got through both of them tonight, great. Um, just to give Jerome a heads up, I'm gonna ask the board to go into executive session when we get done with all, with the minutes and stuff. All right. Anything else on those two things? All right, so. Let me give you my update first. DCA meeting is canceled. Sign line withdrew his, withdrew his, um.
Appeal.
Appeal. And. Oh, good news, Jim Barlow is changing the way he bills us for his services, remember we had the engagement letter and we did it quarterly and so on and so forth? We haven't really, I think the last time he said he'd billed us was, I'd have to look at his email now, but it's been several quarters. And he actually sent the town a refund of like thirteen hundred dollars.
Oh.
Um.
Nice.
So, that was nice, but I did talk to him about, you know, why don't you just keep it on file, and then when we do have something, you can take it out of that. He said, no, let's stick to the, wait, we, he wrote the agreement, so that's fine. So, um, we, you know, we've been lucky this year that we haven't had a lot of legal expenses, that doesn't mean it stays that way, we all know that. Um. John looked up the cost of doing CPI. CPI for when we're looking at budgeting, you said it was two point seven percent?
Oh, right.
What?
Consumer Price Index.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
Cost of living adjustment, essentially.
Okay.
Provides the basis for deciding, determining cost of living adjustment.
And what was it again?
Two point seven.
The, the regional CPI for New England, um, over the last twelve months is at two point seven percent.
So does he have that in your mind when we're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, that's good, good information.
Stuff. Um. We should do another appreciation dinner. I'm thinking maybe we'd have it at the Maple Corner Community Center, because they have a kitchen there, and there's also the East Calis. And there's also the East Calis side of town. Um. To maybe do, we could do something there too, because they have a kitchen at the rec center.
Oh.
So. I wanna see if we can start figuring out a date or something, because everybody really liked it last year.
Yeah, that was great.
Um. Want to talk about a buildings and maintenance person. And I think there's a copy of stuff in the folder.
Speed picking that door.
Oh, here's the note from Jim. As per our agreement, within sixty days, I'll agree, return funding, one thousand three hundred fifty dollars to the town. And then he's just gonna start billing us, um, at the rate.
Such an honest guy.
He is, he's very honest. So, we use far less. So there's that. Here's the building maintenance stuff. And for some reason, that's upside down.
Mm-hmm. That could do this to.
Make it right setup.
To work. Let's do, let's do that.
There we go.
There you go.
So there's lots of little jobs that need to get done, and when the town hall is done, that's gonna need somebody to kind of, like a superintendent, I don't know what you, I don't know what you call it. Currently, we have Andy Feliz at fifty dollars a month, and he comes in and changes light bulbs and fixes the window that's stuck and stuff like that, but for instance, the town office roof over in this corner.
Yeah.
Has been leaking for two years. And I thought somebody has to be the one to go and get an estimate from Hutchins, come to the board, say how much it's gonna cost, should we go ahead? It'd be nice to have a cover over the generator, you know, Andy could probably build the cover. I think, but not at fifty, not, you know, fifty dollars a month, stipend. So what I'm asking is for the board to think about hiring or appointing somebody to do, and Andy's willing to do more than he's doing now, but we, you know, we need to pay somebody a little more. We want them to oversee some of these kinds of projects and things that need to get done. And I found a list.
That looks familiar, looks like maybe a dynamo list or something.
Well, I found several lists.
I mean, you're the few that posted.
I talked to Tom Frost, he's willing to do more work, but he doesn't wanna be the person making sure the work gets done.
Yeah.
Andy Feliz is willing to do more. So I thought maybe, um, and we can do this at a staff meeting too, because the town staff, office staff really kind of knows.
Yeah.
For instance, you know, replacing a water filter and purchasing supplies, trash and recycling, shoveling, all that stuff might be, uh, you know, the, the Andy person, whoever we decide to ask to take that job. And then there's bigger things, like the exterior washing of the building. Tom Frost did it, but the town office staff lined it up.
Yeah.
And they don't really want to be in the job of being the, do you see where I'm getting at?
Yeah.
What we need? So if we could start thinking about this, for instance, this fire extinguisher thing, I don't know why we don't get Fire Protech set them up to come in on a regular basis to check fire extinguishers.
Money.
Or Vermont Fire Extinguisher.
Yeah, one of, one of those.
Let me just have someone to look at the gauge, that's what the guy, our guy would do.
Oh, okay, I thought they had a test.
They look at the gauge, and there's a, there's a date on that when it expires, and maybe you want to take it to them.
It has to have a label, and you have to initial that you checked it. Checked it.
But there's a gauge on it, whether it's.
Right, oh, I thought they had to come in and test it or something, no.
No, they just look at it.
So anyways, that kind of stuff, so maybe we can come up with kind of these, you know, a new list of what we'd like somebody to do, and I don't know if you wanted to like post the position on Front Porch Forum, we have somebody who's good and is willing to do it, I would want to pay that, pay him a little more.
By the way, he changed all the light bulbs in this, how bright it is. Let's see, finally.
Well, and then we had an instance where the smoke detector.
Oh, the battery was chirping.
Or something was beeping.
Right, right.
And so what they do, what's, what's happening, and this is part of the catalyst for this, is John McCullough, who's donated so much time to the town, gets these calls on a Sunday or a Friday afternoon or something.
Something there.
And he jumps to help them, because that's who he is, and he's really.
Then he comes home to the vacuum when you're running.
Right, right. So we need to get this fixed.
It's inside joke, we'll explain that later.
Yeah, we'll explain it later. Um, so are you okay if we kind of work with the office staff?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I don't know who Andy Feliz is, but I mean, if he currently knows our operations and he's willing to do it with more money, you know, I, I would be fine.
And I think when the town hall gets renovated, and is back up and running, that's another whole ballgame.
Yeah.
Because there's going to have to be somebody to do scheduling for use of the town hall and all that, at a later date.
I frankly see offices sliding over there, people are going to see the opportunity there.
Mm-hmm. All right, good, so we can move forward. Very good.
Yep.
Um. So now we're going to do minutes, and then we're going to go into executive session, please. Did you look at the minutes, Rose?
I did.
I did too.
September twenty fourth and October first, is that what you have?
Yeah, cause due September twenty fourth first.
September twenty fourth.
And I think, and I looked at them, and I think I went and made some notes or changes, I can't remember, there was one of them, I don't know, the one Judy took.
Yeah, this is the one she took.
Mm-hmm. I don't think they could be, I don't think I got them to work so you can make that comment.
Yeah, it's Judy.
I think the only, um, one correction I had.
Somebody's name was spelled wrong on one of these.
I think that one was mine, not Jimmy's, I think it's the other document, I spelled semantics wrong.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
So under number thirteen.
Yeah, um, number thirteen, I, it's Poplar Hill Cemetery. Forgot the word hill.
Mm-hmm, okay, I got it.
And I think that's the only.
Yeah, I don't think I had.
That's the only thing that I found on that one.
Okay. All right. Thank you for folks coming honoring my plea to check email a couple times a week, it's really helpful to get. I don't have to call everybody? All right, so are you making a motion, Rose?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty fourth as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. October one, that's the Poplar Hill.
The P H C.
Right. Is it, how do you, semantics, S I M?
S I M A N S K I S.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make sure I had it right.
It's S E R S.
S I.
S I M, okay. On line ten.
Yeah.
Paragraph ten.
Yeah, and there's, you know, a couple throughout the document, yeah.
Right, and there was another, someplace further down, it was, I mean, I thought you did really great job on this, because that was a lot. Oneita, you hadn't, oneita Dunn instead of oneita Dunn.
Do you see if item eight?
Oh, this is the one I had, in the teens and twenties.
Right.
Their fund was established, you mean in the nineteen, are we talking years here? Like in the nineteen hundreds?
Yes. I think that's what he meant, but I'm not sure.
In the nineteen hundreds and twenties, their fund was established.
Where are you, the board?
Item number eight.
Okay, yeah.
In the teens and twenties.
Yeah, that's the early nineteen, I, the nineteen.
Can we say that instead of?
In the early nineteen hundreds.
Yeah, you say in the early nineteen hundreds.
Yeah, in the early nineteen hundreds.
I notice you have a paragraph number and no paragraph.
Well, no, that's the formatting thing that gets.
Yeah, it's because I do it in Word and convert it to Google Docs.
And then converts, and then she converts it back to Word.
And it always, it cleans itself up.
Oh, it does?
So if you look at it online, it's, it's fine.
It's because I need to make it to a PDF to post it online, and I want a document saved for you all on this computer, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
Paid, it was P A I D.
Let's see, we're number five.
There you go.
Well, no, it's that same one.
Paragraph three, middle paragraph eight.
Yeah, P A, P A I D, yearly, but, um, under the people's names at the top, Paul Macedi, there's no R.
Okay, M A C.
Yeah, well, and I, I should have looked it up, but, um, you could Google his name, because he has a brother named John Macedi too. M A C, yeah, I mean, I think you're close, but it doesn't have an R.
Mm-hmm. M A S C, I don't think I had much.
Paul Macedi, and then.
So paragraph seven, line two, right?
Yeah, that right there is his name.
Second sentence in number seven. You see it?
Yeah.
I'm changing, I don't know why it's not showing up there.
That's okay.
It showed up here.
Okay.
On my computer.
It's a different, different version of the document, I mean, probably.
Okay.
And then.
And one little picky thing is, can we change the last sentence where it says erode further to further erode?
What paragraph do you want to?
Same thing, same one.
So instead of erode further, it's further erode.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then you would lose the. Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay, anything else, Rose?
Yeah, if you can scroll down, um. The group. Keep going, I think, oh, yeah, under the, um, keep going.
Oh, yeah, I wrote under the.
Under the, keep going, under the bullets. Okay, stop.
It says.
It says North Callis Community, it's North Montpelier Community. And then keep going. Oh, well. Okay, yeah, no, keep going, you fixed that one already? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, instead of oneita, yeah, it's.
None.
And that's that.
Yeah. That was a lot to take in, just, your brain must some nights be like ready to explode when you leave here, right? Mine explodes before I get here.
Very good. So I'll make a motion to approve the October first minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing one, when you get those done, Katie, could you send, um, send them to the cemetery commission members?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any warrants.
What about the special meeting, is that different? It was a, us. I was looking at a different version.
Right, October ten was a special meeting, but.
Yeah.
So, um, while Katie and Jerome are getting packed up, can we get a motion to go into executive session to ta, to discuss personnel matters?
I would move that.
In accordance with one BSA, section three one three eight three.
Yes, I would move that.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
And we want to executive session at nine oh eight.